Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order and start with the land acknowledgement statement. We acknowledge that the ground on which we live is the traditional territory of Caldwell First Nation, of the Three Fires Confederacy, and the original people of Point Peely and Peely Island, and its surrounding lands and waters, and that of the Huron, Wendat, and Wyndat peoples. We recognize and respect the First Nations who are stewards of the land and waters of Turtle Island, and who have embraced this stewardship since time immemorial. We would also like to acknowledge the contributions of other nearby First Nation communities and all original people across Turtle Island. We will now have a moment of silent reflection followed by the playing of the national anthem. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True faith and love in all our masculine land. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, a true God strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. Lord, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee.
Okay, we'll start with the adoption of our agenda for December 10th, 2024. If the regular agenda to be adopted is presented by Councilor Justignolo and support by Councilor Burns. All in favor? And I care to, uh, can we fix that? Any disclosures of any interest? Deputy Mayor?
Your worship, Staff Report H*5, at the amended addendum speaks to police funding. Because of my employment, I'm going to have to declare a conflict and remove myself from that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any others? All right. There being none, an adoption of the minutes, the minutes of the public planning meeting held on November 12th, 2024. The closed meeting of council and regular meeting of council held on November 26th, 2024 be adopted as presented. Moved by Council Renault, support by Council Burns, all in favor? And that carries. Mayor's comments, just a few tonight. This past weekend, we hosted breakfast with Santa and the mayor over at the event center, and it was an exciting event with Santa and friends with almost 600 attendees, I believe is what we ended up with that day, which is fantastic. And they all enjoyed the holiday facilities. So thank you to staff for another successful event. This is the last weekend for LaSalle Holiday Lights Heritage Night Weekend Programming. So don't miss out on Family Friday, Santa Saturday, and the Holiday Night Market on Sunday. All events are 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and you can visit our website for more details. The lights, however, will be on daily from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Civic Center now until January 4th. Municipal offices will be closed from December 24th through January 1st, and the Valmer Center will be closed Christmas Eve at noon until Boxing Day, and closes early on New Year's Eve at 3:00 p.m. This year's New Year's Eve fireworks show at the Valmer takes place at 7:30 on obviously December 31st. Promotions for that will begin this week. You'll hopefully see some information on that on Facebook, on our new LaSalle Events page. So if you followed the Strawberry Festival page before, it is now called the LaSalle Events page and has everything LaSalle, which is fantastic. And that's what I have for today. There's no public meeting or hearings, so we'll move into our presentations and delegations. And item one is award to LaSalle Fire Service. And we have Greg Grimes from the Canadian Coast Guard Auxiliary to present an award and certificate to LaSalle Fire Service. He will be presenting an award and a plaque to LaSalle Fire Service in person for the 35 years of service. So please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship, members of council, staff, members of the public, and our partners with LaSalle Fire Rescue. My name is Greg Grimes. I'm the District 3 Director for the Canadian Coast Guard Auxiliary, and I'm responsible for the search and rescue stations located from Port Bruce all the way through Lake St. Clair, the St. Clair River, and up as far north as Godrich on Lake Huron. We're really proud of the relationship we have with LaSalle Fire Rescue. And I also should add, I'm also a member of the search and rescue team out of Point Edward where I reside. The Coast Guard Auxiliary Mission Statement states that we are a nonprofit organization dedicated to search and rescue and safe boating activities. Our motto of volunteers saving lives on the water aligns with the LaSalle Fire Service. Mission Statement of promoting safety and providing positive outcomes to fellow citizens in their time of need. The Coast Guard Auxiliary operates with a dedicated team of volunteers, much like the early days of LaSalle Fire, when community members stepped up to protect their neighbors. The Coast Guard Auxiliary have similar roots with boaters, helping other boaters in their time of need. The Coast Guard Auxiliary in LaSalle have a unique relationship that greatly benefits both organizations. By partnering with the Coast Guard Auxiliary, the town of LaSalle is able to participate in training with Coast Guard Auxiliary, and that in turn provides transport Canada certifications to your fire service members at no direct cost to the taxpayer. When the Joint Rescue Coordination Center tasks the rescue to LaSalle, or your boat is used in training, there is compensation provided. So it becomes a win-win for everyone. As well, we greatly appreciate the training together through the use of your classroom facilities and learning from each other and improving on our skills. So today, I'm honored and privileged to be here to acknowledge a 35-year relationship of this partnership, which is great when it's a federal municipal partnership for 35 years. That's wonderful. And we extend our appreciation to the town of LaSalle and its members of the fire department for seeing the value in this partnership and working together to ensure your waterways are safe for your residents and for transient boaters that come near LaSalle. So I have the plaque and a certificate to present. And if I may, before I go and before Randy sits down, we also want to take a moment to state that a partnership like this that lasts 35 years is sustained when there's great leadership to sustain that relationship. So I'd like to present the unit leader for this Coast Guard Auxiliary Unit and LaSalle Fire Rescue, firefighter Randy Curtis. His 25 years of membership presentation. Randy's always available when we have a question, when we need assistance, and ensures that we're all working towards our goals and objectives related to training and boating education. So we're honored to have Randy have been with us for 25 years. So I have a presentation for Randy as well.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes, for joining us. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Okay, item H1, which is our staff reports and correspondence for council's action. We have item one, our 2025 insurance renewal. Our manager of finance and deputy treasurer, Mr. Ferrar.
Good evening, mayor members of council. The report before you seeks approval to proceed with the annual insurance renewal program, as well as the renewal of the cyber insurance. You will note that there's been no increase in the cyber insurance cost for 2025, and overall, there's less than a five and a half percent increase on the annual insurance program. There are details of our insurance within the appendixes, and if there's any questions, I'm available to assist.
Thank you very much. Members of council, any questions? Councilor Carrick?
Sorry, just, I'm reading the report, the part, so has it gone up 5.46%? Is that right? Or did I see that wrong?
That's correct. Overall, it's 5.46%.
And there's, and again, the usual question is, there's not many other companies out there that cover municipalities?
That's correct.
Councilor Burns?
I noticed on the replacement of vehicles that they've changed that policy. Where I think at one time it used to be, the old vehicle was, we had full recovery value. And now, I think it's 10 years or 15 years that there's, I forget exactly what I read in here, but they won't give us that after that. Is that correct?
I'll go to Mr. Malicia for this one.
I believe that is correct. I think that was a policy change that was instituted a few years ago. But I think that is, and by and large, with the exception, I think that only applies to our passenger vehicles. It doesn't apply to our heavy equipment vehicles that are, tend to be a longer life, bulldozers, fire trucks, and things of that nature that have a longer life.
Thank you for the clarification, because I was worried about those two areas. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, there's a recommendation in front of you. Councilor Burns moved, support by Council Carrick, all in favor? And that carries. Item two, our regional IT mutual aid agreement. Our manager of information and technology, Mr. DeJesse.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. The report before you outlines the objectives and benefits of implementing a formal regional IT mutual aid agreement. This initiative, led by the town of Tecumseh and developed in collaboration with regional CAOs and the county IT Working Group, seeks to strengthen intermunicipal assistance and response in the event of an IT emergency, such as a natural disaster, a local emergency, or dreadnoughtly a cyber attack. The county IT Working Group currently includes representatives from the county of Essex, the city of Windsor, and all seven lower-tier municipalities. During my years of service, I've had the privilege of working closely with my municipal counterparts in this IT Working Group to support and advise one another on our respective technology systems. This collaboration has allowed us to share best practices, achieve IT efficiencies, and address the growing prevalence of cybersecurity threats, just to name a few. The proposed agreement will enhance these collaborative efforts by establishing clear parameters for requesting and providing assistance in the event of an IT emergency, including provisions for compensation, insurance, confidentiality, and other critical elements. The agreement will also expand the network to include the municipality of Chatham Kent and the township of Peely, enhancing the pool of resources and expertise available to all participating municipalities. Engagement under the agreement will be initiated between the CAOs of the affected and responding municipalities. While participation is voluntary, the agreement ensures that all necessary details are defined upfront, enabling swift and efficient response when assistance is required. In summary, entering into this agreement will offer significant benefits to the town of LaSalle and regional municipalities, fostering a robust framework for mutual support in addressing IT emergencies. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, members of council. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Capata?
Thank you, worship, through you. Just to make sure I understand, with the supports that are going on, all of these supports, all of the software, all of the stored data, remains within the four walls of Canada, sir?
Yes, that is correct. The confidentially and the privilege of that information remains in Canada.
Thank you, worship.
Any other questions or comments? Council Renault?
Thank you, worship. Nick, I think it's a great idea. I'm glad you guys were able to put something together. I did notice in the financial implications, it's kind of unknown because it's only really if we step into an emergency on one side or the other. And I do honestly believe that if the emergency's on our part, that any, any cost sharing with, with, with another municipality would be minimal compared to what we could be facing if we were actually attacked. So thank you for, for putting this together, and I will move the motion to accept.
Moved by Council Renault, support. Councilor Richo Spagnolo? Any other questions or comments? All in favor? That carries. Item three, our Vince Marcott Bridge Improvement Contract Award, which is our manager of engineering, Mr. Kapucci.
Thank you. Mayor members of council. This report here in front of you today is to approve the bridge repair contract to Warkerton contractors for the price of $289,000. Currently, as most of council knows, the bridge is closed due to some unforeseen issues with the bridge. There was some additional cables that broke, and with the winter months, the snow loads could cause the bridge to break. So unfortunately, after this report was submitted and prior to the closure of the tender, that we had it re-inspected and the consultant recommended that we close the bridge. And I can speak further to that later. However, the, the bridge right now is, is closed, and to get it back up so that it can be open to the public again, which serves as a great connection point between the two areas there, we would need to install some more joists under the bridge, do some panel repairs. There is also some sandblasting, and obviously replace the cables that have broken, and a little bit of concrete work. So we put out a tender. It closed on November 12th. We have five bidders there, and with speaking with the consultant and with the contractor, we are recommending completing the work with Warkerton for the noted price. And in talking with them and looking at the weather, we're hoping that some work may be able to begin in the winter, but it's likely going to start the majority of the works in April. And I can answer any other questions that we may have regarding the work. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Richo Spagnolo, question?
Thank you, through you. Have we worked with Warkerton before?
Do you, Madam Mayor? No, we haven't. This is going to be one of their first jobs that we've ever done with them. This type of work is kind of unique. This bridge in general is unique. There's not many like it. The contractor is used to doing shoreline restoration, which deals with a lot of bracing and cable, cabling. And so that's why they've feel confident in their expertise to do this type of work with the cables of the suspension bridge. A lot of the timber work is very minor in nature, which it's not like a road we have with the, the concrete and the difficulty nature and dealing with those types of works. So we feel comfortable that they should be able to complete this work.
Okay, just to follow up, just because the discrepancy in the, the five quotes are quite a significant difference from the first to the last, and even in the in-between, there's quite a difference. So I want to make sure we're getting the, the same value in, in the work.
Correct, yeah. We, I mean, barring the last one, which was very, very high, they're, they're just a competitive bid, and we went over the scope of work with the contractor. And they are aware and, and have a plan to address all the concerns under the contract, so we feel comfortable in using them. Yeah. And actually, one thing that just reminded me, sorry. I had a question from Madam Mayor last time regarding the birds, the sparrows from the last bridge. And they're, they're, so we talked with biologists, they're, they're nesting seasons in May. So for both projects, we'll be in construction, and we'll be monitoring any nesting. And as long as, if there's any nests, we're able to essentially scare away the birds and ensure that there's no nesting eggs or anything of the sort before they, while, so we'll be out there during construction, so we wouldn't have to worry about the nesting happening. So that'll alleviate the environmental concern as well for both projects.
Any other questions or comments? I do have one. It says here, financial implications, it's, it is over the estimated amount of $75,000. So that's what we thought the repairs were going to cost, was $75,000? Is that, am I reading that right?
Correct, that was in the budget. That was the budgeted amount a year ago.
So is it just we, now that we've inspected it, we've seen it's not in the shape we thought it was in?
The, there's a lot, there was more work than what was originally anticipated. I think the original idea was we just needed to tighten a couple of the cables. But since then, three have broken, and there's a lot of, we're, we're adding more joists along the bridge, and the railing right now is too low to current standards. So we've had to increase the railing size for people on bikes or what have you, so that they have a safe, so they don't fall over essentially. So there were a little extras that were put onto the project that weren't accounted for, and that $75,000 budget. So between additional failures and bringing it up to code, yeah.
Thank you for that. My only other question is, is there any way to move this a little bit sooner in the year? I know we're looking for the nicer weather, but we're saying here to be completed prior to July 1st. And I know that we are going to hear very upset residents who use those trails, especially come spring. And so is, is there any chance it can be sooner?
Like I, through you, Madam, yes. So you're, the, we didn't anticipate the bridge needing to close prior to writing this. There is certain works, like the sandblasting and the coatings, that cannot be done before, just, it can't happen. And the, the timber work, we can, we, we could start. So we'll work with the contractor, and they seem eager enough to start earlier to get that done as soon as possible. But it's the temps for the coatings, as well as the concrete work, which we can probably work through with some heating. But I, I would expect it to be done July, prior to July. It was just, now that it's been closed, we also would like to get it open sooner as well. So we'll talk with the contractor and, and see where we can go from there, for sure. Yeah.
Thank you very much. If there's no other questions or comments, there's the recommendation in front of you. Moved by Councilor Burns, support by Councilor Richo Spagnolo, all in favor? And that carries. Item four, fence by law repeal or replace, paralegal and Aaron O'Donnell. And I don't know who's presenting, or is it our legal counsel, Mr. DeDalt? Okay.
Beauty, Madam Mayor, and members of council, actually, it'll be both of us presenting. I'm just doing kind of a high-level introduction, and our paralegal Aaron will be handling the bulk of the report before you tonight. So this is a repeal or replace. I was just going to give a brief history here. So the current fence by law, in 2019, we actually took two existing ones. We had a pool enclosure by law and a fence by law. We merged them into one. And then in 2021, we had some minor changes. So the current one today is that one from the last couple of years. In those, that span of five-ish years, we've kind of got a sense now of what In those, that span of five-ish years, we've kind of got a sense now of what works, what doesn't work. So some of these changes reflect just what we've seen in the field through information provided by our bylaw enforcement officer. So a lot of the amendments deal with some greater clarity for issues that may have caused some ambiguity that she's had to work through with residents, and what we've had to work through ourselves, and just greater enforcement provisions. The two main additions to this one is that we now have a section specifically about decks, and that's come in as a request through our chief building official, and also for privacy screens, which we've had a couple of issues that we've navigated over the years. If any members on council remember, that around the bylaw committee, we dealt with one of those in 2021, I believe, so that was a few years ago as well. And this looks, we've had a few more since then, so we're looking to put out a framework to kind of address those now, and I'll let Aaron speak into more detail on that. I will say it's been a comprehensive review and a process that involved a lot of collaboration. I thank Ms. Beggs and her team, specifically Roxanne, our bylaw enforcement officer, who gave a lot of feedback for what she deals with directly on the ground, as well as the supervisor bylaw, Alan Burgess, and also Andrew Calucci, the chief building official, in terms of what they have provided in terms of input. And then in terms of all of the research and putting it all together and doing all that, the legwork, that was Aaron to my left here. So, a lot of credit to those individuals, not so much me. I just kind of help guide and oversee where I can. I'll just point out that attached to the report, we have a red line version that shows the changes that were made. We want it to be as transparent with council and the public as possible. I know in the past, we've had questions about, well, what are the changes? What are the sections that we've touched here? So we said, we will throw it all out there, let you see it. At the end of the agenda tonight, we have a bylaw that's nice and clean, that's ready for adoption, should council approve. And with that, I will turn it over to Aaron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. I'm going to keep this brief and give a high-level overview of the changes. So as it was outlined in the report, some of the changes to the bylaw were made after receiving feedback from those that administer the bylaw regarding the enforceability and some of the new provisions that we, that were required. The new bylaw has been amended to streamline language and structure, as well as enhance the overall clarity. So that's going to account for a lot of the red lines in the Schedule A. And I'm going to highlight here some of the procedural amendments and the newer provisions, such as the decks and privacy screens. The beginning of the bylaw includes new recitals to add legislation from the Ontario Building Code, as well as the Municipal Act. The Ontario Building Code is for the requirements of issuing deck permits, and the Municipal Act was for the enforceability measures. In the definition section, you're going to see that there's been the addition of the deck and the privacy screen definition, as well as a change to include the oversight committee as the bylaw committee was dissolved. Section 9.3 and 10.3 were amended for additional safety measures. This allowed for enforcement measures if required by the compliance officer. 9.3 speaks to eliminating climbing from the exterior side of the swimming pool closure, and 10.3 speaks to the gates remaining in a fixed and locked position if the gate is too large for a self-closing latch mechanism. This was based off the experience of the compliance officer and what she needs for better resident safety. Paragraph 14 is where we included the addition of the privacy screen. This is based off discussions with administrations stemming from complaints that were received for existing privacy screens, as well as requests to install more privacy screens throughout the town. It's in line with what the bylaw committee did allow in 2021, and it's also been benchmarked against surrounding municipalities that also include privacy screens and their bylaws. The associated material and the height requirements, as well as the setbacks, are in line with this as well, and reflect what generally is allowed within other municipalities. And it also meets what the intent we would like in the town with height requirements, setbacks, and material. Paragraph 15 is the addition of the deck permit. This is a new process within the town. This is required from the Ontario Building Code for the permit process. So it is briefly outlined in the bylaw, but residents will be able to contact the building department for more particulars and assistance when they are going through that process. And finally, paragraph 17, which is the enforcement and penalties section, has been amended to provide more resources and tools to the compliance officer. This is going to enhance resident safety from the sections that I've just mentioned. It includes the traditional enforcement measures that we were used to, which is the POA and the issuing of orders, but it also speaks to the administrative penalty program, which has been in effect, but this codifies it within the bylaw a little bit better for clarity to residents, as well as what authority the compliance officer does have. So as you can tell, the overarching theme of the amendments refers safety and enforceability, as well as the added provisions for deck permit process and the privacy screens. Thank you, and we're both available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. I have Deputy Mayor Capata.
Thank you, Worship Through You. I just have one question from a resident who saw this and shot me a text to say that, based on this definition of deck, what they call their roof, is not compliant. So, there was never a problem before. If they go to fix it, do they see a problem in the word "construction"? And they're crystal clear that what they have, excuse me, they use as a deck, the definition of deck has never been understood to this degree. So I'm just, I'm just looking for people who have these types of structures that do not comply with section 15.5 of the new deck bylaw. If they were to amend an existing structure that they've had for X amount of years, would they then be, would they then be required to get a building permit, or is there an exemption because they've had it? How do we move forward with people who have structures that are not intended to be not compliant, but do not comply?
Through you, Worship. That's probably a question best for our CBO, who unfortunately isn't here at this moment. I would imagine that where a permit is required for that kind of construction would be subject to the Ontario Building Code, which I don't have that expertise to answer that on the spot. You said a deck is on the roof? Or I was, I'm just trying to clarify what was, what was meant by that question.
In this, in this definition, in this location, they call it a roof.
Okay.
I will call it a deck. You can call it whatever you want. But it is someplace where people are able to sit, where they're able to have chairs, where there's a railing, and they use it as a sitting area. It doesn't comply with this, and it's been attached to this structure for, since the house has been there. So their concern is, they don't want to get, they don't want to run afoul of the municipality. They were crystal clear they don't want me to give their address, but they simply said, if we have, if we have to do some work to it, how do we comply? Because our intent is only to comply. We don't want to create any problems for us. We don't want to create any problems if we sell the house, so on and so forth.
Fair enough. Okay. So I would suggest, so the definition of deck speaks to either the wood or concrete other material that's either projecting from a building or freestanding in the rear yard. This sounds like it's affixed to a structure already, so it may not fit that definition. So again, I would say, might be fine under this bylaw, but if there's alterations made to a building, that might be worth a call to our building department as opposed to the fence bylaw.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Then it'd be more than, would it be more than fair if this resident had more concerns to direct them directly to you? I don't want to misrepresent what they've said, and I surely don't want to find myself involved in misspeaking or misrepresenting their position.
Yeah, sure thing.
Thank you, Worship.
Counsel Carrick?
Thank you, Worship. Just more for curiosity, under 5.2, bob wire and electric fences. I don't remember seeing any electric fences in town. I grew up on a farm, but I'm just out of curiosity, would that need a permit, or are they just allowed to put something up like that, protecting livestock? Just for clarification, do we have any of that? Would you know? Thank you.
Through you, Worship. I don't know if we have any in discussions with Mr. Burgess. See, like, that is the intent. It would be for livestock protection for farms in the agricultural area. Whether we have any or not, I'm not sure, but that is where it's restricted to that use, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just curious in case I missed it. Thanks.
Any other questions? There's a recommendation in front of you. I can read it if you want me to.
No.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Carrick, supported by Counsel Renault, all in favor? And that carries. Item five? I'll wait for Deputy Mayor. So item five is police funding resolution that we are putting forward. And I can read the resolution so that everyone's on the same page and understanding what it is we're asking for. Then if we need more conversation, Chief is here as well to be able to assist us. So, whereas the province recently proposed to provide over 77 million in financial relief to municipalities that obtain policing services from the Ontario Provincial Police, and whereas this proposed financial relief is aimed at helping municipalities balance their budgets and offset the increased costs resulting from the collective bargaining agreement reached between the province and the OPP Association in July of 2024, and whereas notwithstanding the fact that the collective agreement negotiated between the province and the OPP Association directly impacts the negotiations between the Police Service Board and the Local Municipal Police Service Association, the province has not proposed any similar financial commitment to municipalities that provide policing services through a municipal police service board. And whereas municipalities that provide local policing have also experienced an increase to the cost of providing police services to their community. And whereas these municipalities also face challenges balancing their budgets as they navigate the complexities of providing adequate and effective policing services within the Community Safety and Policing Act framework, while at the same time, funding upfront investments and ongoing maintenance of their capital assets, including roads, water, wastewater, municipally-owned recreational facilities, and other tangible capital assets. Now therefore, it is resolved that the Towne of LaSalle call on the Ontario government to provide equitable funding to all police services, and further, that this resolution be circulated to Premier Doug Ford, Minister Solicitor General, Minister of Finance, MPP Anthony Liardi, and all MPPs in the region, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and all municipalities with municipal police services. So if you have any questions or comments on the resolution, after conversations with Chief, we feel that it is imperative that we let the province know how we feel about the inequity between what they've offered the OPP and funding available for municipal police services. Maybe I can turn it over to Chief if you want to make any comments?
Unless there's any questions about how we arrived here, I can tell you that the Ontario Association of Chiefs of Police and the Ontario Association of Police Service Boards have already sent a letter to the minister on this topic. The chiefs met on December 5, which was when we were having our council meeting, and we discussed the issue, and we thought it'd be prudent to also ask municipal councils to lobby the same. And hence, this is how we're arriving where we are today. So, subject to any questions, pardon me, I'm supporting, not that I can support the resolution, but I'm supporting the resolution.
Thank you very much. So I have Counsel Renault, and then Counsel Carrick.
Thank you, Worship. Through you, to the Chief. Just, just so that we have a better understanding, I've always understood that police officers across the province all make very similar amounts. When people talk about the cost of police servicing, you know, most constables of equal nature across the province make similar amounts, and that a lot of times, when one organization sees increases in their pay through a negotiated settlement, that many of those coming will request the exact same thing. So, I do believe, unless I'm incorrect, that we should probably expect those gains to be requested at the, at the next agreement, and that we will need this money to help equalize. So I, I have no problem supporting the motion, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but, but that's the way I've always understood it.
Yeah, that's a very, fairly accurate assessment. It, it wouldn't be just the OPP, it's the larger police ecosystem, like the entire sector across the province. But you're correct, there's either, I call it leapfrogging, or matching other awards in other jurisdictions. So as police services, associations bargain with their boards, they'll increase a little bit, and then someone will leapfrog them, or at least come to the same level. But by and large, you have leapfrogging happening across the province as collective agreements expire. So this is one of many, but one service can set the standard for the rest of the province.
So, in general, the, the fact that they're all in financial turmoil right now, and we may not be, our day will come.
When you say "they're" in financial turmoil, can you clarify?
I, I've read many reports of OPP services going up 23%, 25%, and a lot of those municipalities actually lobbied to get this money. But all that's going to happen is down the road, if we're ignored now, or we're put aside now, the issues that they're running into and then the challenges that they're having balancing their budgets are, is going to end up in our lap eventually. So this will, will even the playing field across the board.
So as I understand, the $77 million that the province is, is giving to municipalities that have OPP contracts, it's one-time funding. I don't want to speculate as to why. I think I, I know the reason why, but I don't want to speak for the provincial government. So really, if I'm understanding that correctly, the can is being kicked down the road for municipalities that contract the OPP till next year, when they're going to realize those, those increases once again. So as I mentioned in budget, I tracked, as much as I could find publicly available data, I tracked 79 of the 330 municipalities that have the OPP under contract, and the average increase was 26.62, 26-point-something percent increase for next year. And so now there's effectively, we'll call it a subsidy for 2025, that's reduced those increases for those municipalities. So the chiefs of the small to mid-sized police service are saying that's inequitable. Municipalities that have their own police service are reflecting the true cost of policing, whereas that's not occurring in other municipalities. We're not upset, so to speak, that other municipalities are getting the benefit, but we ought to be getting the benefit too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Carrick?
Yes, just so I'm understanding too, that the funding mechanism has changed for them. Basically, they're getting asked to pay for more of the true costs, and that's why everything's going up. So if you take a little town of 1,000 people, like in the Coorters or whatever, they got OPP, but they're not paying the true cost because it's offset, so now they're forcing everything to come up a percentage. My understanding, so I guess my question is though, and we brought this up at budgets, because it's grossly unfair, and we agree with that, do you, do you have any idea how much it would affect us, or how much, like, percentage-wise? Is there like a set number, or is it different on each, each level?
So it's not clear to me how they apply the 77 million between the 330 municipalities. So I'm not aware of a formula that they've used. If it's publicly available, I'm not aware of it. I would guess that it's not publicly available. I know Greater Napanee is getting 760-something thousand dollars, but that would include a bunch of lower-tier municipalities, I would imagine. And, and so that's the only award that I've, that I've researched. I would have to look at, it would take some time to maybe collate that data. I might be able to provide some information, but to your question, to answer your question, I'm not aware how that would apply to us, and you know, how much money we would get back.
Okay, thank you. So, and in understanding that, perhaps if we got like a lump sum, it would maybe, could you maybe go toward training or something, or buying capital, right? Because I think it was mentioned that this is a one-time thing, there's an election probably coming in the spring, so who knows what's going to happen after that? But this isn't guaranteed money every, every fiscal year, is my understanding.
As I understand it, you're correct. It's one-time funding. 10% of the money is going to wages for 2025, and then some of that funding, because these municipalities also got bills for the year previous, overtime and things like that. So most of the money that they're receiving is, is backwards in time, covering some costs from bills they've received. 10% of whatever the money they're, they're being given is for 2025.
Okay, thank you. So thanks for this. This is very well done, and I hope it carries some weight, and everybody can get a little something.
Any other questions or comments? There being none. I know a local municipality saw a large sum go to them, and I think their bottom line, their overall tax budget decreased by 2%. So it's a big number. And if we were fortunate to, to get the same fair treatment, we'd have to make that decision whether it goes to the bottom line of the budget, or it goes to some of the other financial pressures that we know we're facing in 2025, 26, when it comes to whether it's technology or we have a new contract coming in 2025. So there's several things that, you know, we have pressures just like other municipalities, and us against OPP. and us against OPP, I think we've had that conversation, Chief and I, that we don't want that to be what this is. It's, it's just about being fair and equitable to all police forces in Ontario. So you have the recommendation before you? Moved by Counselor Renault, support. Counselor Carrick, all in favor. That carries. Okay, we have the consent agenda with seven items for correspondence, as well as a summary of reports to council. Are there any items there that you want to pull out? Counselor Burns?
Yes, I'd like to pull out F from the township of Isia, I guess, unfair share of provincial and federal government financial support. If I'm allowed to do that, I'll speak to it.
Okay, so any other, besides F, any other ones anyone wants to discuss? There being none, we're going to first then move all the other items, so item one, A, B, C, D, E, and item two, move. Deputy Mayor Acapada, support. Counselor Richard Spagnolo, all in favor. That carries, and now we'll move to item F, which is the township of Essex, fair share provincial, federal government financial support. Counselor Burns?
Township is asking for fairness in GST and land transfer tax, I think, which affects every municipality across Ontario, with helping generate a significant amount, as it says here, of direct and shared with municipality from those two levels of government, and I feel that, again, just like the police one, we don't know if it's going to fly, but by supporting it, we at least give more credence to this probably small township. I'm not sure where, but I'm sure what they're looking to get would be something that would help us going forward, should the government of the day decide to share some of that revenue with us. That's why I, I put it on the floor to support. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually had the motion coming to us in January, so is it best just to receive it then, instead of creating our own new motion in January? The junior won't come. Okay. Okay, so Counselor Burns, your motion? Your, yep.
Yeah. You want me to read all of this?
No, no, no.
No. Okay. I would make a motion that we support section F on our consent agenda.
Do you want to do anything else with it?
And forward to the proper officials that they have on the back. I think they've covered them all, but if administration feels or somebody we're missing, please add his or her name.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Burns, support by Counselor Renault, all in favor. That carries. Committee matters, we have two. Item one, Essex County Council highlights for November twentieth. Any questions or comments? Motion to receive. Counselor Carrick, and Counselor Burns, all in favor. Item two is the Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting held September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Counselor Richard Spagnolo.
Thank you, I'll just speak on it. So on September eighteenth, we had Rosa and Linda, who arranged a Zoom presentation with Julie Sawchuk. She's an international bestselling author and founder of Sawchuk Accessible Solutions. She was able to give us her life experience, as well as answer some questions with the Accessibility Committee. It was a very well-done presentation and informative for our committee, so I just wanted to note that, and thank Linda and Rosa for arranging that.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? There being none, motion to receive. Counselor Carrick, Counselor Renault, all in favor. And that carries. Questions and statements by council members. So I have something to put forward this evening. As some of you may be aware, Counselor Dejarle has not been able to attend some of our meetings due to health reasons, so this evening I'm putting forward something to authorize her time off. So whereas section two-five-nine-C of the Municipal Act two thousand and one provides that a member's office automatically becomes vacant if the member is absent from meetings of council for three successive months without being authorized to do so by resolution of council. And whereas Counselor Dejarle has been unable to attend council meetings for health reasons, now therefore be resolved that council formally grants Counselor Dejarle a leave of absence and authorizes her absence from council meetings while she is dealing with her health. And further that Counselor Dejarle shall retain her seat on council for the duration of this permitted absence. Moved by Counselor Carrick, support by Counselor Richard Spagnolo, all in favor. And that carries. Any other questions or statements by council? We can do it at the end, if you want. Notices of motion? Closed session. We have nothing to report. Bylaws? Bylaw eight-nine-four-two is not listed on the original published agenda, but has been added as an addendum, so that is in there. I hope everyone's had a chance to review it. So we're giving the following bylaws a first, second, third, reading, and finally passed, and that's bylaw eight-nine-four-zero, bylaw to authorize execution of an agreement between PAC Incorporated and the Corporation of the Town of LaSalle for the Matchett Road Bridge Rehabilitation. Four, eight-nine-four-two, being a bylaw to adopt the budget for year two thousand and twenty-five. Eight-nine-four-three, a bylaw to authorize the purchase of six-two-one Front Road, LaSalle, from Yang Fing Liu. Eight-nine-four-four, being a bylaw to adopt official plan amendment number one to the Town of LaSalle official plan. And eight-nine-four-six, being a bylaw to regulate fences, decks, pools, and hydromassage pools on private property within the Town of LaSalle. And to repeal bylaw eight-five-nine-four, being a bylaw of regulate fences, swimming pool enclosures, hydromassage pool, and outdoor swimming pool on private property within the Town of LaSalle. Moved by Deputy Mayor Acapada, support by Counselor Renault, all in favor. That carries. And before we get into our confirmatory bylaw, this is our last meeting before the end of the year, so I'm going to give members of council an opportunity to speak to the public. I'll start with Counselor Richard Spagnolo.
Thank you. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank, or to thank, to wish our town staff, as well as our residents of LaSalle, a very merry Christmas, happy holidays to all of you, and I hope you enjoy this time to recharge and spend time with family and friends, and just with creating memories. I thank you for a great year, and I really hope and wish the best for you in two thousand and twenty-five. So that's.
Thank you, Counselor Carrick.
I'd like to also wish family and friends and residents and our staff a very merry Christmas and happy new year. See you after January first.
Counselor Burns?
I'll, I'll echo the same sentiments, both our staff, friends, and taxpayers. It was basically, we did a lot this year, and moving forward, I only see better things coming, and all the best in the new year to everybody, prosperity as well. Thank you.
Counselor Renault?
I too would like to thank all of our staff, from the top to the bottom. This has been a big year in general, some great ideas that have come forward, some great projects that have come forward, and some more to come. We realize that in the next year, there's, there's going to be some action down on Malden Road, and I just want to thank everybody for their hard work to keep all the wheels on the bus. To our residents, thank you. I've had many reach out to me throughout the year for different issues, different questions, different concerns, and, you know, sometimes we don't always agree, but a lot of times they're very respectful when, when they do reach out. So I want to thank everyone who has reached out to us in the last year, either by email or by message, because it really does help mold where we're going next. And to my council colleagues, I hope you all have a merry Christmas. You can all enjoy time with family and friends and maybe disengage a little bit from some of the craziness we've dealt with in the last five days. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Acapada.
Thank you, worship. The privilege to sit here is not lost on me, and what we do in this municipality is not lost on me either. We have the best staff, the best team, the best residents. If you walk through LaSalle, you see lights, you see happy folks, and we're not the driving force behind it. It is the community that does it. So I wish I could take credit for everything, but that's not how it works. It is a combined team effort. And this point, I say best to all the staff. Happy holidays, merry Christmas, enjoy yourself. Family, time is precious. Enjoy it. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all members of council first. I know sometimes it can be hard sitting in these seats, but you guys have done a really great job working with the public and working with our staff, and I want to thank you for everything you've done. I don't know where two thousand and twenty-four went. I'm pretty sure it just started. I feel like every month I was like, oh my God, it's February, oh my God, it's March, and I don't know. Somehow we're at the end of two thousand and twenty-four and looking at two thousand and twenty-five, and it's so exciting. It's so exciting to see what we're doing in our municipality and the direction we're headed in, and none of that would be possible without any of you. You guys have truly committed to our residents and to our town, and we just can't thank you enough. I know we, we try to at meetings, and we try to make sure to, you know, you're appreciated, but there'll never be enough words to show you how much we really appreciate everything you guys have done to our residents, and, you know, it's nice having someone join us today. But thank you for engaging with us, and thank you for being a part of the process, because that's what makes the difference. That's how we know if we're moving in the right direction, and that's how we know that we're doing what people want, and we're becoming the municipality that people are hoping for. And, you know, we, we know we can't always please everyone, but we try our very best to make sure that LaSalle's moving in the right direction. And so at the end of the day, all I want to say is thank you very much to everyone. I hope you have an amazing holiday season. I hope you get time to disengage. I know I'm going to try to. I promise you, I will not email anybody between December twenty-fourth and January first. That's going to be really hard to keep that promise, but I'm going to keep that promise, because I think it's really important that everyone gets family time, because like Deputy Mayor Acapada said, family's everything, spending time with your loved ones is everything, and make sure you get to do it as much as you can. So thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and see you in two thousand and twenty-five. And with that, we have the confirmatory bylaw, eight-nine-four-seven, be given a first, second, third reading, and finally passed. Moved by Counselor Richard Spagnolo, and support by Counselor Carrick, all in favor. That carries. Thank you for joining us in person, online, and have a great holiday.